City Attorney? We've got one walking around here somewhere. I don't think Joe's prepared to handle it.
Mr. Mayor.
That's okay. I knew you'd be coming in soon. I believe you have a report, sir.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. At the closed session just concluded, the council by unanimous vote authorized participation at no cost to the city as an amicus in litigation in support of the city of Anaheim. The case is Qualified Patients Association versus City of Anaheim, a case in which a proposed medical marijuana purveyor has challenged the city of Anaheim's ordinance prohibiting medical marijuana dispensaries in the city. Anaheim prevailed at the trial court level, which was appealed to the California Court of Appeal. Our amicus brief would be filed in the Court of Appeal.
Thank you, Carl. Frank, I believe you have the invocation this evening.
I do. This past week, I had the privilege of meeting with the mayor and the council members at a few events, namely at the Extreme Makeover Community Event in New Hall by the Community Center, as well as up at McGrath Elementary School with a number of residents. And the mayor and I, as always, were so impressed by the turnout at both those events. And what was interesting, and what's so nice is here we are in a community that's so diverse, both through economics, through our demographics, whether it's seniors, whether it's parents with youth, whether it's Hispanic, African-American. It's clear that all parents of youth want the same thing, and that's safe, community, good schools, great parks. And so as we look to this coming year, this cycle, I know as a council, we look to work with staff in our community in continuing our town hall meetings that the mayor's going to have, and looking at the great turnout we had tonight for an important issue, to work with our community members and the parents of our youth to provide the best services possible.
Thank you, Frank. This time we're called to order. Roll call.
Councilmember Ender. Councilmember West, here. Mayor for Tim Ferry.
Here.
Councilmember McLean, here. Mayor Keller.
Here.
Thank you.
Frank, would you lead us in the pledge?
I am. I'm calling up the leader of the Explorer Troop to come up here and lead us in the pledge. So, one of those gentlemen back there, the little head guy, come on up. You're on the hook. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the free public or which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty.
Okay, we have a couple of recognitions this evening. And, Maureen, are you prepared to go with the first one?
I am. I am very, very excited tonight to honor some of our very own in Santa Clarita who are just amazing people. The council tonight would like to recognize our own Santa Claritans who have diligently participated in the Mars Phoenix Program, which was the historic first landing north of the Martian Arctic Circle known as the Phoenix Mission. This landing was the first successful propulsive landing on Mars that did not require airbags for assistance in over 30 years. The main objective of this Mars program was to evaluate biological potential of the red planet, which is the hunt for possible building blocks of life. Since its landing, the Phoenix Mission has been returning spectacular images, making remarkable meteorological observations, and doing surface soil and ice analysis determined the components of our neighborhood planet. I would now like to recognize all of the individuals who contributed to the success of this mission, and when I call your name, if you could please come up, come forward and come up on the dais. Gene Von Filio, spacecraft navigation team. Fed Drain Navigation Software. Scott Evans Navigation Software. Ken Fuji, Mission Design. Thomas R. Gavin, the JPL Associate Director. Barry G. Goldstein, the Phoenix Project Manager. Kathleen Kipston, I probably have that wrong, Kathleen, my apologies. Bizzard Raufi, Maneuver Design. Byron Yoder, Deep Space Network Support. Norma Mainland, Mission Operations Systems Lead. Maria Shellfeffer, Flight Sequence Team. Robert Denise, Lead Payload Software Engineer. We want to thank this team, the Mars Phoenix team. These are truly amazing people. They have done something that no one else has ever done, and they're right here in Santa Clarita. Let's give these people a hand.[385.12][385.12](APPLAUSE).
If you have cameras, come on up to the front.
Is Barry here?
Guys, come on up. We're used to everyone.
Barry?
Right? I guess I do.[405.18][405.18](LAUGHTER). Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you for the recognition. I really appreciate it. I'm Barry Goldstein. I'm the project manager. In trying to find out how many people on this project actually worked in Santa Clarita, I started to put a program forth at JPL to move the facility up here to Santa Clarita to save money on commuting. Unfortunately, that went on deaf ears. But we do have a vast, we do have a very good team up here and good representation in Santa Clarita, and hopefully that'll increase. And maybe someday we'll actually get a train service that goes right down to Pasadena. That'd be nice. Thank you.
Before we take the pictures and...
I just want to tell you, when I saw the news on this and I found out how many people lived in Santa Clarita, I was just so proud of this amazing accomplishment. And when he says he wants more here, I think this is just an amazing representation of the amazing and good minds that we have here in our city. So, we're very pleased and proud, and we really think you've done just an amazing job for the world, let alone your country and your state. So, thank you all.
All right, ladies, you have to go in front.
(LAUGHTER).
What Bowery wants.
Frank, I believe you have the next one, recognizing our Explorer Post of the Year, Post Six.
Yes, I know many of you watch politicians say it's not rocket scientists. This is the first evening where we can actually say they are rocket scientists. So, it's nice to know we've increased our intellect on the dais here by a few hundred IQ points. So... Speaking of increasing not only the IQ points of our dais tonight, but also just tremendous courage, work ethic, we have young men and women that represent the Explorer Program for our local firefighters. I know as an administrator and teacher up here in the Hart District, I've been so impressed by the young men and women that participate in our local Explorer Posts. We've been selected as the Western Council Explorer Post of the Year. These young men and women spend their time practicing various drills that will prepare them for a career in fire service. And I can tell you, young men and women, I know many of my students over the last 20 years that today are firefighters in various agencies that all were explorers. They've made a commitment to serve their local community through various community service activities and events. They maintain exemplary reputation in their homes, schools, and communities. And at this time, we'd like to ask these impressive young men and women who are future city's firefighters, come up and be recognized. Andrew Johnson, Explorer Post Six. Cody Massey. Tyson Clark. Thomas Lean. Steve Stickles. Ryan Anderson. Matt LaCount. Jonathan Sanchez. Kalen Hawkins. Humberto Caurovivias. Did I almost get it right? Devin Buckley. Bernie Deo. Alex Martinez. Eddie Ruffalo. Kevin Sells. Nicholas Sweeney. Ryan Lizarros. Stephen Resendez. Tim Rodella. Yvette Servin. David Mancini. Josh Howard. Mark Robinson. Taylor Wilson. Ronnie Massey. Ryan Rice. Travis Wheaton. Jacob Windell. And Brandon Zavala. A big hand to the Western Post Firefighters of the Year.
My name is firefighter, paramedic Ryan Metro. I am honored to lead these kids every week to establish their goals and try to help them be successful as possible. On behalf of the Los Angeles County Fire Department, Battalion Chief Martinez, CSR Stephanie English, Captain Peterson, and the crew of Fire Station 124, it is really an honor for me to thank you very much for recognizing these kids. They do a fantastic job. Their dedication and service to the community is something that's been a privilege for me to watch, and even actually for my whole family to watch. Their dedication is absolutely fantastic. We've been recognized by sworn personnel, captains and chiefs, and members of our local council. We've been invited to recognition luncheons for the work that we've done, and that's really been fantastic. But to stand here in front of our peers and the people that we're sworn to protect and help is truly remarkable to us, and we really appreciate it. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
All right, we'll get a picture here. Thanks, guys. All righty, we'll move on to presentations to the city, of which we have none. Committee reports. Marsha?
I have a few things I'd like to tell the council, so I hope you'll bear with me. It might take a little bit longer than normal. But before I forget, I just want to remind everyone of the community workshop for the downtown New Hall Library on September 30th, Tuesday, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. We had a wonderful, exciting group there the last time for our workshop, and it should be really exciting and want to have everyone involved, so please do come to that. I attended, and Lori was there for a while, and Bob was there for a while, the Boys and Girls Club 40th Year Celebration. And I know you had to leave, but I brought commemorative books for all of you, and I brought a little commemorative token that they handed out. And then I accepted on behalf of the city of Santa Clarita, a thank you for the city, for our help in making sure that the Boys and Girls Club is successful. So, I will turn that over to you. I was able to attend the SCV Trustees Association Meeting, and Ken was there, Mike Murphy was there, Donna Newsy was there. And the purpose of this meeting was to take a look at the emergency preparedness for all of our school districts, our schools, and the college. And I just want to tell you, after hearing all the reports, our children are in good hands. We are prepared. Let's just hope we don't have to use the services, but if something does happen, we are prepared. I wanted to mention something that has happened. You all know that I represent the city on the Orange Line Development Authority, and at the last meeting, we voted unanimously, and there is a firm, it's called DL Piper, and this firm operates the top-ranked real estate practice in California and the United States, and has extensive experience in rail, real estate, and government procurement, and was selected from among the best, most experienced, and highly qualified project finance law firms in the world. They, what they're going to be doing is, they're going to set the stage for raising private investment for the most innovative transportation and development project in Southern California. And DLA Piper will coordinate securing the developer agreements that will play a critical role in realizing the $20 billion in private financing the Orange Line Development Authority requires to implement the Orange Line High-Speed Maglev Corridor Development Project. What that means in getting such a prestigious firm on board is that we are ever closer to finally being able to hopefully get an environmentally sensitive, great rail project that's going to help to move people here in Southern California. And as you all know, transportation and our crowded freeways is one of the most troublesome things that we have to deal with in our lives. The other thing was, is I went to, well, by teleconference, the Library Commission, the LA County Library Commission, and if you don't already know, we were told that the county is looking for dollars to utilize space left available when College of the Canyons moved out of our Canyon Country Library. They're expecting $2 million in developer fees, and they're looking to redo a floor plan to separate children and adults and to add more computers. They're hoping to have these funds by next year, and they're working with our city in doing this, so that's exciting for our Canyon Country Library. And don't forget to come out to the Street Art Festival in Old Town New Hall on this weekend, and also, I guess, the Powwow at Hart Park is this weekend as well. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on any of these things that I've mentioned to you. Thank you.
Frank?
I want to invite everyone out tomorrow night, Wednesday, at the Hyatt, at 6:45 p.m. for Teen Seeing Unplugged. I believe this is about our sixth year. We have Dr. Tina Bryson, who's going to speak on the teenage brain and what it means in its development in relationship to the choices that teenagers make. I know every year, we've had to carry in chairs. We have well over 600 people every year attend. It's free. In addition, there are vendors there for resources for our parents. So, once again, to all parents and their teenagers. It's very important that teenagers hear the information with their parents. That's tomorrow night, 6:45 at the Hyatt. I want to thank Ken Poleskamp, the entire city staff, Gail Ortiz. This past week, we had the State of the City Luncheon. It was a sold-out event, and I know each year, we attend thinking, wow, another year went quickly. It was a very impressive event, and I was very impressed by just how much is going on in this community that we've accomplished, but more importantly, that we're working on today. And when you hear each council member go through their section, at the end of the day, you write down, there's 30 very active project-improving, quality-of-life-improving things. So, thank you, city manager and staff along the back wall there. It was very impressive, and I want to thank you for your time and efforts. This Saturday is the Senior Wine Auction. We're honoring Joanne Darcy, a former mayor and council member, a great lady, just giving heart. It's at 11:00 a.m. at the Mann Biomedical Center. We really do encourage everyone to attend. All the proceeds are going to support Meals on Wheels for our seniors. As we stated before, there's almost 900 seniors that participate and receive their Meals on Wheels, 400 of which are shut-ins, that this is the only meal or social contact they receive. So, if you can't attend, I know Brad Barron's and their board would accept donations specifically to the Meals on Wheels. If you can't get ahold of the senior center, I'm sure you can call the city here, and we'd more than glad to give you the information.
Thank you. Maureen?
Thank you, Mayor. It's going to be a very full weekend. I certainly will be attending the support event for the seniors. This weekend is also in downtown New Hall, the Street Art Festival, as you heard, and the Powwow at Hart Park, which is just an unbelievable gathering. Generally, about 20,000, 30,000 people is all day Saturday and Sunday. It's in downtown New Hall at Hart Park, going on at the same time as the Street Art Festival. So, a lot to do for families. There's a lot for children to do at both events. One of the things I wanted to mention, the council, is on September 20th, 1958, Hart Park was dedicated as a public park. It was donated by Bill Hart, and it is a 250-acre park, and they celebrated their 50th anniversary as a park this last weekend, on the 20th. And it is an amazing place. If you've been there, you already know this. If you haven't, there's a lot happening there. The Historic Society is further expanding and getting ready to do a major, almost film industry-type heritage haunt for Halloween. There's a herd of bison. There's farm animals. There's a world-class museum. There's trails, and there's camping. And if there's any place I know of that you could find pretty much anything you'd want in a park, it's at Hart Park. There's a nice gift shop there. If you're starting your Christmas shopping early, park needs you. And we're really excited to congratulate, I presented the plaque on behalf of the city, congratulating them for their 50th anniversary, so we're very pleased. I have been working diligently with all the donors for all of the different story stations for the Veterans Historical Plaza. Artist Frank Rock has completed all the line drawings, a lot of work, and all of the wording has been approved, and that should be off to the foundry shortly, and hopefully, we will have all of the historic story stations depicting every conflict in American history, starting with the Revolutionary War through now. So, I'm looking forward to seeing that done, and I know the park being completed, that aspect will be wonderful. Has been a lot of work. I want to thank staff. Great job. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to congratulate Liz Seiple, who was the Woman of Honor at the Betty Ferguson Dinner on Saturday. It was a wonderful event. She's a terrific lady who's done so much in this community, and she's on a farewell tour. I think we're not going to let her leave. And officially say welcome to the community to Daryl Polk, who's the new CEO for the Child and Family Center, and I know that he's excited to be here, and we're thrilled to have him. I wanted to echo the sentiments about the State of the City Luncheon. I thought it was terrific, and we didn't take the time to introduce all the VIPs in the audience, because that would have been everybody. But I did want to specifically recognize and say thank you to representatives from our other elected officials' offices who attended, from Supervisor Antonovich, Assemblyman Smythe, Senators Renner and McClintock, Congressman McKeon, and even a representative from Senator Feinstein's office. And I think it was exciting that they were there. We appreciate their support, and I think it's wonderful to see them as part of the community. On the political note, I'd like to congratulate both the Democratic Party and the Republican Party in Santa Clarita for opening headquarters, each of them. It's wonderful to see people getting involved in this election, and no matter how you vote on November 4th, and I think it's exciting to see the enthusiasm. And I'm thrilled to see both headquarters, because there is a hotly contested state senate seat that covers part of the Santa Clarita Valley, and I think it's important that whoever we elect know where Santa Clarita is and who we are. So, I think it's neat that we have some representation. And lastly, about the luncheon, the video was terrific, and so I specifically want to thank the staff who worked on it, Evan, Micah, Laura, Alicia, and Gail. It was great to see, not us, but to see all the stuff going on in the city. And if you missed it, if you were not able to attend, it's on the city's website, and I encourage you to take a look at it. You will be impressed at how much you have accomplished as a part of this community in the last year, and how many great things we have in store.
Thank you, Lori. It's one of the benefits of going last. Most of the things have been covered effectively. Thank you very much. Would like to make a quick comment on a couple, if I may. One is Thursday evening, I had a chance to go over to Old Town New Hall and on, what, Market just off of Main Street, we had the Farmer's Market. Guys, if you haven't been to that Farmer's Market on Thursday afternoon, you're missing out. Really great gathering. I would say, not just for the fact that we've got fruits and vegetables on display and available for purchase, but there's crafts, and there's community members there, and music, and it's just a great thing to take a Thursday afternoon with the family and go on over to the Farmer's Market in downtown New Hall. Additionally, I wanted to mention that we are going to hold some town hall meetings here, and now that fall is upon us. The first one will be October 6th. It's in Saugus. We're going to make each of the four communities, but the first one is October the 6th at Highlands Elementary. It'll be at 7:00 p.m. And I want to invite people to come out and join us in the town hall meetings, and I am looking forward to doing a lot of listening, if I may share with you, so make sure we're doing the best job we can in the city. For more information and specifics, when we're going to be at particular communities, if you check the city's website, they'll be in there. And again, I hope we have good turnout for these town hall meetings. And then in closing, I would like to thank my fellow council members. We came together last week for a team-building session, basically about five hours spent with each other and talking about things and what we can do to be a more effective council in addressing the issues of this community. And this is something we do every couple of years, and certainly, this was no exception. It was very beneficial for us to have an opportunity to come together, and I thank my fellow council members and staff for helping to coordinate that. Thank you, Ken.
Okay, with that, let's move forward in the executive portion of our meeting. Counselor, are there any items on the consent calendar that you wish to have pulled or discussed? Well, Marsha's checking. Is there any city, community members?
I have two written comments on item number six.
On item number six, written comments? Maybe I can have those. On item number six, which is Resolution authorizing the installation of a multi-way stop control for the intersection of Valley Street and Eighth Street, I've got one comment card, yes to the stop sign, another one, please install this stop sign. So, we have two comment cards in support of this item from the public. Marsha, you're good? Okay, at this time, I will ask for approval of the agenda.
Second.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Approval of the minutes of September the 9th.
I move.
And again, hearing no objections, so ordered. Moving to the consent calendar.
Move. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Ender?
Yes.
Councilmember West?
Aye.
Mayor for Tim Ferry?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Mayor Keller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, let's move to item number nine. We'll open the public hearing. This is a hearing on objections to proposed removal of a non-conforming sign located at 24811 Railroad Avenue. Carl, you have comments on this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. It's my understanding there's been a request to continue this matter, and a motion to continue would be appropriate at this time.
I would move to continue.
With the hearing open.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second to continue this item?
Second.
Very well, then we will continue the public hearing on this item to yet-to-be-determined date, Carl.
...date, that would be the, I forgot, River, uh, 11th of October, is that correct? I'm sorry.
October 14th?
14th.
Very well. Thank you. We will move to item number 10. This is also a public hearing, and I'll open the public hearing at this time. This is on master case 04-325, Henry Mail New Hall Memorial Hospital Master Plan Development Agreement and 2008 Revised Draft Environmental Impact Report and Authorization to Modify the Professional Services Agreement with RBF Consulting for Preparation of the Henry Mail New Hall Memorial Hospital EIR. Mr. Brodman? I assume we're going to have Lisa handle this in your stead, sir? Lisa Weber, please.
Thank you, Mayor Keller, and councilmembers. Good evening. Lisa Weber, Planning Manager with the City... Lisa Weber, Planning Manager with the city's Community Development Department. This is a continued public hearing for the proposed Henry Mayo Hospital Master Plan project. Tonight, you will be receiving a three-part staff presentation, a presentation from the applicant team, as well as testimony from the public. The focus of tonight's presentation will include an overview of the project history and recent activities that have occurred with the project. We'll be reviewing the project components, discussing the SEQA process and the findings of the September two thousand eight Revised Draft Environmental Impact Report. We'll look at the various project alternatives, and the Assistant City Attorney, Joe Montez, will be discussing the terms of the development agreement. The original proposal was submitted by the hospital team in August of two thousand four, and this original project was proposed in two phases over a twenty-five-year timeframe. This proposal added five-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand square feet of net new square footage of both hospital and medical office space to the campus for a total build-out of approximately nine-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand square feet. As a result of this, a draft environmental impact report was prepared and was circulated in two thousand five. In two thousand six, during the planning commission process, the applicant revised the project, and this was to address planning commission and community concerns at the time. The project was changed to be a three-phase project over a twenty-five-year timeframe, and as a result of these project modifications, a revision was necessary to the draft EIR. This was prepared and recirculated in two thousand six. Later in the planning commission process, the applicant removed the ninety-thousand-square-foot Medical Office Building Four from the request, and also Medical Office Building One was reduced in height from four stories to three stories. In February of two thousand seven, the planning commission took action on this project, and that included a recommendation of approval of the project entitlements, a recommendation of certification of the environmental impact report, and the statement of overriding considerations. And at that time, the planning commission denied the development agreement request. Prior to the city council process in June of two thousand seven, the applicant removed the remaining components of the build-out phase of the project, and this included an eighty-four-thousand-square-foot Inpatient Building B and the hundred-and-thirteen-thousand-square-foot Administration Building. Therefore, the current project before the city council would increase the project to a total of six-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand square feet, which is a three-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand net square foot increase over the life of the project, and the life of the project was reduced to fifteen years. This total represents a fifty-six percent decrease from the original project submitted to the city in August of two thousand four. So to date, two planning commission site tours were conducted in two thousand five. Seven public hearings were conducted before the planning commission. Two draft environmental impact reports were prepared and circulated before the planning commission. Five city council hearings were held in two thousand seven, and two revised draft EIRs were prepared and circulated in two thousand eight. During the city council process in two thousand seven, the council made a number of comments, and that resulted in some further project revisions by the hospital applicant. In August of two thousand seven, these project revisions were brought to the city council for year review. Also, in September of two thousand seven, the city council provided some feedback with regard to the terms of the development agreement, and that will be discussed later in this presentation. With regard to the project modifications of August two thousand seven, some of the major components included the following: a fifteen-year master plan timeframe, the relocation of Medical Office Building One, further away from the main hospital entrance along McBean Parkway. Parking Structure Four was redesigned to be a fully subterranean parking structure with surface parking. McBean Parkway realignment option was identified through some additional engineering analysis, and this eliminated any potential for the future need for eminent domain. Medical Office Building Two was relocated closer to existing MOB-F, and this was to address some of the concerns to the residential neighborhood further to the west, and this created a greater buffer. Architectural enhancements were added to Medical Office Building One and Parking Structure One. Enhanced landscaping was proposed along the project boundaries, and outdoor pedestrian amenities were added throughout the campus. Upon reviewing these project modifications, staff determined that additional SEQA analysis was required to fully analyze the impacts of the project. And so those additional technical studies and SEQA analysis took place from late two thousand seven into two thousand eight. These included revisions to the traffic study, air quality and noise studies. Additional visual simulations were prepared, and additional aesthetics analysis was conducted. There was a discussion added regarding global climate change to the air quality section. A water study and a parking study were both prepared. Sewer and hydrology studies were prepared, and new project alternatives were analyzed. In June of this year, a revised environmental impact report was prepared and circulated from June twenty-sixth to August eleventh for forty-five days. Now, due to a date discrepancy that was identified in the Notice of Completion Notice of Availability, a decision was made to recirculate this document. But before we did that, we looked to make some further revisions to this document, both to adjust some of the calculations in the technical appendices, and also to add a more comprehensive analysis of global climate change. So in September of two thousand eight, the Revised Draft EIR was sent out, recirculated for an additional forty-five days, and that is presently occurring. It started on September third; it will end on October seventeenth. A list of revisions from the June two thousand eight document to the September two thousand eight document was included as part of this new September EIR, and that list was also attached to the new revised Notice of Completion Notice of Availability that went out to the public and to the agencies. So before the city council, you have a number of items to consider. There is a master plan booklet of exhibits, which demonstrates the various components of the master plan, a draft development agreement, draft conditions of approval, and the September two thousand eight Revised Draft Environmental Impact Report with the technical appendices. All of these materials and documents are available on the city's website and have been available at various public locations. Two entitlements are requested by the applicant team. This includes a master plan and a development agreement. The master plan encompasses the expansion of the medical campus over a fifteen-year timeframe. It would encompass building heights in greater than the thirty-five-foot threshold established by the city's Unified Development Code. It would allow for the exportation of ninety-three-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-three square feet, sorry, cubic yards of dirt over the life of the project, and it would allow for operation of a hillipad. Again, a development agreement is requested, and that is currently on appeal to the city Like to talk a moment about the original conditional use permit that was filed by the applicant, which has been removed from the entitlement package. This original CUP was submitted by the applicant as one of the entitlements back in August two thousand four, and at that point in time, a master plan entitlement within our Unified Development Code did not exist. That was subsequently added by the applicant after the January two thousand five date, at which point that became effective. What we have determined is that the conditional use permit request, in addition to the master plan request, is redundant in nature, in that the master plan encompasses all of the components originally requested by the conditional use permit. A memorandum which details this further has been included as part of your agenda report. It was prepared by the Assistant City Attorney, and that is also available on the city's So in summary, the master plan components include the following: an inpatient building, three medical office buildings, a central plant building, three above-ground parking structures, and one subterranean parking structure, two hillipads, traffic improvements, and landscaping improvements. Throughout the city council hearing process, there has been some questions about the types of services offered within medical office buildings. Staff has found that uses typical in medical office buildings include doctors' offices, outpatient services and care, surgery centers, diagnostic services, centers of excellence, imaging, and when associated with a hospital, other non-direct patient care facilities and services such as medical records, human resources, or administration. Again, to remind the council, here is an aerial view of the proposed master plan, followed by a site plan. I'm now going to briefly go through the statistics of each of the proposed buildings. The inpatient building, located in the central portion of the campus, would measure one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-three square feet and would offer room for one-hundred-and-twenty-new acute care beds. It would measure eighty-five feet in height to the top of the parapet and one-hundred feet to the top of the windsock and the elevator shaft, and this building would accommodate a rooftop hillipad. Medical Office Building One, located along McBean Parkway, would be three stories in height and measure eighty-thousand square feet. It would measure forty-five-point-five feet to the top of the parapet and fifty-one-point-five feet to the top of the screen and the roof access. Medical Office Buildings Two and Three. Medical Office Building Two is located in the western portion of the campus along McBean Parkway. Medical Office Building Three would be located behind that, along the western edge of the hospital campus. Both of these buildings would measure sixty-thousand square feet and be three stories in height. They would be forty-five-point-five feet to the top of the parapet and fifty-one-point-five feet to the top of the screen and the roof access. A central plant building measuring ten-thousand square feet and twenty-six feet in height would be located in the central portion of the campus, adjacent to the inpatient building, and would support the functions of the inpatient building. Four parking structures, as I mentioned, are proposed as part of this project. Parking Structure One would be located along McBean Parkway. This parking structure would be six levels, with five levels above ground. It would accommodate seven-hundred-and-fifty parking spaces and also accommodate a rooftop hillipad. It would measure forty-seven feet in height to the top of the parapet and forty-nine-point-five feet to the top of the parking lot lights, and sixty feet, sixty-point-five feet to the top of the screen and the roof access. Parking Structure Two would be located in the northwestern portion of the campus. This would be six levels, five levels above ground, offering five-hundred-and-seventy-nine parking spaces. It would measure forty-seven feet in height to the top of the parapet and forty-nine-point-five feet to the top of the parking lot lights. Parking Structure Two would connect directly to Parking Structure Three and be built with a solid wall along the western facade to screen any light or noise impacts to the adjacent residential neighborhood. Parking Structure Three would be four levels in height, three levels above ground, two-hundred-and-seventy-eight parking spaces, and twenty-seven feet to the height, in height to the top of the parapet, thirty feet to the top of the lights. Again, there would be a solid wall along the western facade. Parking Structure Four would be located adjacent to the main hospital entrance. It would be three levels, with two of those levels as subterranean parking, with surface parking at the top, three-hundred-and-sixteen parking spaces in total. Above-ground structures would be limited to an elevator shaft, lighting, and stairwell access. Integrated planners would be provided along the surface, and until Parking Structure Four is needed later in the phasing, surface parking would be provided and the holiday tree would In addition to those major components of the project, there are eight additional modifications that would be made as part of the master plan. These include the addition of nine new beds in the nursing pavilion, the demolition of the eight-thousand-square-foot Foundation Building, the reconfiguration of surface parking for a total of three-hundred-and-eight parking spaces. As I mentioned before, the provision of a hillipad on both the rooftop of Parking Structure One and the inpatient building, the provision of right-turn pockets and the modification of traffic signals along McBean Parkway, the reconfiguration of ninety-seven-hundred-square-feet of administration space within the existing main hospital building to accommodate eighteen new IC beds. Those administration functions would move to Medical Office Building One. The exportation of up to ninety-three-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-three cubic yards of dirt over the life of the project, and that would be specific to subsurface excavation for the inpatient building and Parking Structures One through Four. And finally, the dedication of a public right-of-way from the center line along McBean Parkway with an additional right-of-way dedication to accommodate a new right-turn lane from McBean Parkway to Orchard Village Road for future McBean Parkway improvements, and this is also part of that McBean Parkway realignment option. Campus parking. Existing parking on the campus totals nine-hundred-and-seventy-two parking spaces. Code-required parking for the project would total two-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety spaces. And I'd like to be clear that this includes not only the proposed facilities as part of the master plan, but it would take all of the existing buildings and facilities on the campus and bring those up to current city code standards. The master plan proposes a total of two-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-one spaces, and that would be accommodated in the four parking structures with one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-three spaces and three-hundred-and-eight surface parking spaces. I'd like to also note that no gating of parking structures or paid parking would be permitted as part of this master plan. The applicant would need to apply for that. It's a point in the future if they chose, and that would require approval of a minor use permit as well as city council approval. Hillipad operations, I did mention, two separate hillipads are proposed. The first short-term hillipad would be built on the rooftop of Parking Structure One, and then the long-term hillipad would be provided on the inpatient building. Both hillipads would remain through the life of the project, but only one would be in operation. The only way that Parking Structure One hillipad would become operational again is if there's any major emergency situations or any future construction activities that would preclude the use of the inpatient building hillipad. At this point, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Senior Planner Sharon Sorenson, who will detail the components of the draft EIR.
Thank you, Lisa. The September two thousand eight Revised Draft EIR has been prepared to evaluate the environmental impacts associated with the hospital campus master plan as required under state law. All eighteen environmental sections of the draft EIR have been updated with current information, and about half of these, the ones shown in dark red, include updated technical studies or analysis. Significant changes include a new parking section addressing existing and proposed parking at the hospital campus, and the air quality section includes discussion of global climate change. The aesthetics, light and glare section now describes the history and character of Valencia as it relates to the project site. It includes a series of photo simulations that depict how the hospital campus would appear when the buildings are constructed, and how trees and other plantings would appear at fifteen- and twenty-five-year intervals from locations along McBean Parkway and from the adjacent residential neighborhood. Parking. To evaluate current parking conditions, field observations were conducted at the hospital campus between the hours of six a.m. and eight p.m. These parking surveys were documented, and an analysis of peak-hour parking demand was performed. The study also includes a review of the city's parking code requirements for medical office buildings and other hospital-related parking, and compares that code to thirty-nine other cities. The study found that the city's requirements for parking are among the most conservative of the samples surveyed, ranking in the top ten percent. The study concludes that construction of the master plan project, as proposed, would bring all existing buildings into compliance with today's parking code requirements, and all newly constructed buildings would also... all newly constructed buildings would also comply with the current parking code. Traffic. The updated traffic section reflects the findings of a revised traffic study, which addresses traffic conditions for both with and without the project, using the city-county traffic model forecasting traffic volumes under both the interim year and the long-range cumulative twenty-thirty conditions. With construction of identified street and intersection improvements, right-of-way dedication along the McBean frontage, and payment of BNT fees, all project-related traffic impacts can be mitigated to less than significant. Although project-related traffic in and of itself does not create significant impacts, the project does contribute to long-term cumulative traffic impacts beyond the fifteen-year project timeline. Cumulative traffic would result in significant delays at the intersections of McBean Parkway and Valencia Boulevard and at McBean Parkway and Orchard Village Road. Today, these two intersections are not included in a fair share program to fund needed improvements. However, an amendment to include them in the Valencia BNT District is currently pending before the County Board of Supervisors. The master plan project proposes to dedicate sufficient right-of-way to accommodate needed future street improvements at the intersection of McBean and Orchard Village Road, eliminating consideration of eminent domain. If the Valencia BNT District amendments are adopted as proposed, the project's contribution toward cumulative impacts at these two intersections would be fully mitigated with payment of the increased BNT fees. The air quality study was updated based on the revised traffic study. With mitigation measures applied, mobile and stationary sources of air pollutants would not exceed South Coast Air Quality Management District thresholds. Therefore, project operations would not result in long-term impacts to air quality in the Santa Clarita Valley. However, construction-related activities create particulate matter known as PM-ten and PM-two-point-five, or dust, which would exceed South Coast's localized significant thresholds. Even with implementation of standard dust control and other mitigation measures, the project, as well as cumulative development, would result in significant unavoidable air quality impacts during periods of construction. Global climate change was assessed as part of the revised air quality analysis based on the latest information available from the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. Project-level thresholds of greenhouse gas emissions have yet to be established, so evaluating a project's effect on global warming is still speculative. However, since vehicle emissions are the biggest generator of greenhouse gas, it is reasonable to assume that by reducing vehicle miles traveled, the amount of greenhouse gas emissions would also be reduced. The draft EIR takes the conservative position that a project of this size would contribute to cumulative greenhouse gas, and that the project's contribution to greenhouse gas emissions from vehicle exhaust are considered to have a significant effect on global climate The noise impact for the project was also revised based on the traffic study. Existing noise conditions onsite were evaluated, as well as project-generated noise, both onsite and offsite, including traffic, helipad operations, and construction. Of these, only construction-related noise impacts would remain significant with implementation of mitigation measures. All other impacts are either already considered less than significant or could be fully mitigated through state regulations or noise standards adopted under the general plan and municipal Solid waste disposal. Even with compliance of all regulatory and voluntary recycling programs, the amount of solid waste generated by the project, as well as for cumulative development, would be considered significant since landfill sites are a finite resource. Therefore, impacts from solid waste are considered significant and unavoidable. Collectively, the draft EIR concludes that unavoidable significant impacts would occur as a result of the project in the following five areas: construction-related air quality for both the project and cumulative development, construction-related noise, cumulative global climate change, long-range year twenty-thirty traffic at two intersections, and both project-related and cumulative solid waste disposal. If the city council wishes to approve the project as proposed, statements of overriding consideration would need to be adopted for each significant impact. As required under SEQA, in addition to the no-project alternative, a range of reasonable alternatives which feasibly attain most of the project objectives were analyzed. The alternatives analyzed in the draft EIR include the no-project-no-development alternative, meaning no change to the existing hospital campus, the inpatient building alternative, where no medical office buildings would be constructed, the medical office building one and two plus inpatient building alternative, and the reduced-height alternative, which includes all three medical office buildings, plus a seventy-foot-high inpatient building rather than the eighty-five-foot-high building as proposed. The draft EIR concludes that after the no-project alternative, alternative two, the MOB one and two plus inpatient building, would be the environmentally superior alternative, primarily due to the reduced number of vehicle trips associated with one less medical office building. It should be noted that alternative three, the reduced-height alternative, had similar impacts as the proposed project. However, because the square footage of the inpatient building would be slightly increased, traffic volumes associated with the project would also slightly increase. EIR schedule. As Lisa mentioned, we're currently within a forty-five-day public review period that will end on October seventeenth, two thousand eight, and copies of the EIR, technical appendices, master plan, development agreement, and conditions of approval are all available at City Hall, at the Valencia, New Hall, and Canyon Country Libraries, and on the city's website. Written comments on the draft EIR must be received by five PM on October seventeenth in order to be included in the final EIR. The SEQA process and next steps. Staff and the EIR consultant, Colette Morris with RBF Consultants, will prepare written responses to the comments received and to the oral comments received during the hearing this evening. And then this item will return to the city council with the final EIR in November two thousand eight. The final EIR will include responses to the environmental comments received, any document changes due to public input, and the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program.
At the Santa Clarita Valley Senior Center, we do our best to make sure that no senior in our community is left alone or hungry. Come and enjoy our seventeenth annual benefit auction Saturday, September twenty-seventh. This fundraiser will feature fine wine, international cuisine, and a salute to our event's founder, former mayor Joanne Darcy. Make sure that our seniors receive the services that they need, from recreational programs to home-delivered meals. Together, let's make sure no one's call goes unanswered.